...the July 27th Planning Commission meeting. As always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all can join us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll be taking Roka, Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Present.
Commissioner McGee.
Present.
Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
And Chair Keldorf.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you.
We will open up public communications to anyone here wanting to speak on an item not agendized. Seeing none, we'll close public communications. Do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Chair, no, no written communications.
Consent calendar, just one item, meeting minutes from our July 13th meeting. May I take a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
And I'll take votes, Commissioner Inga.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Heschler.
Aye.
And Chair Keldorf.
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, a new public hearing. I'm sure there's a staff report, a new drive-through Starbucks within the Nash Street Exchange retail development.
Good evening. I'm live here. Okay. Good evening. My name is Brad Meiser and I'm contract planner that's here assisting the city with this case. So tonight, we're here to talk about a proposal for a new Starbucks drive-through at 2100 to 2180 East El Segundo Boulevard. So we're to discuss the site plan review and the conditional use permit. Just a bit of background, the Nash Street Exchange retail development is a 7.34 acre site between Continental Boulevard on the west and Nash Street on the east. The site is located on the south side of East El Segundo Boulevard. It's located within the El Segundo South Campus specific plan and has a zoning designation of the commercial office mixed-use zone. In that zone, within the specific plan, allows for a variety of commercial uses, specifically allows for restaurants, drive-through restaurants with a CUP, retail, medical office, and that's indicative of the uses that are on-site now and are proposed for the future. The next image before you is the zoning map for this area. As you can see, again, within the South Campus specific plan area on the south side of El Segundo Boulevard as part of the Phase One of the Raytheon Development. This slide here shows the previously approved site plan. We're going to talk about some of the changes that are proposed this evening. What I'd like to note for the commission here in this slide is this shows the previously approved site plan again, and there was previously a bank that was approved, a 3,500 square foot bank, right near the entrance, the center entrance off El Segundo Boulevard. That, as part of this application this evening, that bank will be taken off of the site plan. So what you'll see in the next slide is the updated slide, including the proposed Starbucks drive-through. As you can see, that is now located more towards the west, really at the corner of Continental Boulevard and East El Segundo Boulevard. The building itself is quite slight. It's 1,130 gross square feet, setback of 25 feet from the property line along East El Segundo Boulevard, as well as 25 feet from the property line in Continental Boulevard. So that is compliant with the specific plan guidelines for setbacks. It's a one-story, 18-foot-high building. It meets all the development standards for the specific plan. This is just a little bit more of a blow-up here, just to show you that location of the proposed drive-through. The original application, as I mentioned, was authorized back in 2017, roughly about 75,500 square feet of uses, including a 29,000-square-foot market, 7,200 square foot of retail, bank, restaurants, medical building. That was then amended back in 2019 to allow for a 43,000-square-foot medical building. That's in place now. I've been to that actual building myself, had the 3,500-square-foot bank, retail and restaurant buildings. Now with this application, we'll be amending and, again, taking out that 3,500-square-foot bank in favor of the drive-through, as well as part of this application also basically brings up-to-date the sizes of buildings in their as-built condition and also some other site revisions. Here's a site photo, perspective, looking towards the southeast. So basically, this is the corner of Continental Boulevard and East El Segundo Boulevard. One of the images of what the proposed Starbucks would look like, very contemporary design. Staff worked with the applicant to kind of update the design away from their first round. It has fiber cement board that has a wood texture on the bottom and with a base of sort of that dark gray tiling on the top. And I'll go ahead and spin you around the building. You can see here, there's a walk-up window, as well as the drive-through. And then we see the drive-through here. You can see that there's a metal overhang in the signage where that's proposed. Also, as part of this proposal, there will be certain improvements made in the parking lot for path of travel. So here, you can see a new pedestrian walkway that essentially would allow for patrons and pedestrians if they park in other parts of the lot, also people coming from other parts of the campus to find their way to this new Starbucks. In terms of traffic and queuing, so parking, just on its face, parking for the project is compliant with the municipal code. In fact, there are 385 proposed parking spaces out there. 377 are required, so there's a surplus of eight. A traffic study was conducted primarily just to look at the AM and PM peak hour trips. As part of Phase One, there were trip caps associated with the development. And so what was found is that in the AM peak period, there is a trip cap of 89 trips. This is right at that number. And then in the PM peak, there would be 149 PM peaks where 225 would be allowed. So that's fully compliant with the Phase One trip caps. In terms of queuing for the drive-through, that was some of the primary analysis that was conducted for this particular use. The queuing analysis concluded that there's a 330-foot drive aisle, drive-through lane. It's by a factor of about two to three more than some of the surrounding uses and other drive-throughs that we see throughout the city. By reference, the Raising Cane Drive-Thru, it basically has a double drive-through, about 75 feet in length. So that's nearly double what will be provided for this Starbucks drive-through. In terms of the findings that the commission needs to make, the findings are for both the site plan review, as well as a conditional use permit, namely that the project is consistent with the specific plan, that is meeting the development standards and the design standards for the specific plan. And then, more importantly, I think, in terms of the conditional use permit for the actual drive-through itself, there are three primary findings that need to be made that are listed here on the screen. What you'll find in the resolution, obviously, is those three findings with full justification of how staff believes that they meet those findings, and we do believe that it meets those findings and merits approval this evening. In terms of the environmental determination, there was a master EIR that was done for the specific plan. This project is wholly consistent with the uses as envisioned, and by and large, this particular project would be categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA in that it meets the provisions of 15303(c), which is very specific for smaller buildings in an urbanized setting. With that, staff does recommend adoption of the resolution 2938, would approve the EA revision B, as well as the site plan review and conditional use permit to approve a new 1,130-square-foot drive-through. And with that, staff will take any questions. We also have the applicant here in the audience. They have their traffic consultant, Ferrin Pierce, here for any questions. And the city also had retained Kim Lee Horn, and we know that we have a representative on the phone if we have any other questions for detail there. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have a quick question about outdoor seating. Is there any outdoor seating that's been planned for?
Yeah, and I kind of glossed over that a bit. There is an outdoor seating area that's going to have sort of a little fire pit that's just southeast of the actual building itself, more of sort of a gathering area that if a person wanted to walk up, get a cup of coffee, they could come over and sit down in that area, as well as anybody else within the campus. So it's kind of a publicly accessible seating area.
Can you walk us through really quick, if you go back to that screen, about how cars will queue?
This is a little bit small, but essentially what you have is you have the three points of ingress and egress out of the site. So essentially, if a car were heading westbound on East El Segundo Boulevard, they'd turn into that center drive-through, head towards the west and loop around right there. So there will be two signs that have sort of wayfinding signage that would point motorists and/or pedestrians, well, namely motorists, to where they would get into the queue.
So just to orient me, please.
Yeah.
This is west, to the left.
To the left is west, where Continental Boulevard is.
Right. So they come in, is it going this way or is it going this way?
So it's, the queue is heading westbound.
Heading westbound, okay.
Yeah. So it's running parallel to El Segundo Boulevard, and it stacks for approximately 330 feet, right where directly adjacent to the center driveway, and then heads east and then wraps around the building, then heads south and then exits.
Brad, isn't there also a Class 1 bike lane sort of between that queue and El Segundo Boulevard?
There is, yes.
And does that exist yet?
That is, that is built, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, there's a sidewalk there. I think I should double-check just to make sure. I think there's improvements happening now, yeah, yeah, exactly.
And the pedestrian walkway is?
So there's a sidewalk that's outbound of the building, parallel to East El Segundo Boulevard, and then there are the sort of internal path of travel, circulation, walkways that would be, that are there now and that would be improved as part of this project as well.
Is it just paint or are they actual?
It is, it is, I think it will be painting and striping, yes.
Right, because thinking of access from 2100, right, if you have, you're assuming that you're going to have employees or 2110, I guess.
From the medical building?
Right there.
Yeah. So this is that close-up of that path of travel. So you do have other connections coming from, when it was effectively the south, from the, towards the medical office building, and then connecting into sort of that longer linear.
So are those blue striped areas going to be pedestrian paths?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're referencing outdoor seating where the blue and white striped area is up there next to the parking.
Right, we do have some images in the plan set that I could pull up if you'd like to see that, but it's essentially, yeah, it's essentially, what's that?
I think it was one of your slides.
It didn't quite show up there, I think. It's right in the foreground of this site here. Yeah.
Meaning it's out of frame?
It's out of frame, yeah.
And there's no indoor seating, right?
Correct. That's correct.
And our Teslas only allowed?
So does the property owner envision that there'll be other buildings put into that? Kind of the northwest part of that property? Because if it's a Starbucks with no indoor seating, I mean, that's potentially going to be a parking lot, you know, that's not going to be used, right?
Yeah, I'd defer to them to answer what any future plans are.
Okay. And so it's, I was counting, the 330-foot drive-through can hold 18 cars. Is that, is it made that long for a reason? I was looking at the rendering and it counted the cars, so.
Sure. Yeah. What I understand is that for this particular use, I mean, I think what the idea was is to allow for the greatest amount of carrying capacity that you could have, so that it would not cause any sort of impacts to the circulation within the actual site itself. So again, it's by a factor of about two or three longer than, you know, the surrounding land uses and the other drive-throughs.
Okay, and that's why I'm asking if that other, that parking lot may have another building later. So the runway, if they do, then that drive-through would shrink. If they did put something there, in, on the, the building on the other side of that parking lot, which seems like it would make sense to, because there's no other buildings that are used there, there's no reason for someone to park and go to Starbucks, except for the limited outdoor seating.
Yeah, I guess it would depend on the site layout, because I think you could keep that drive-through intact.
Okay.
Right, still built.
Yeah, and I think, no, I was going to say, and I think too, something to keep in mind is if they were to propose another building, it would come back to the commission, because the way the CUP and site planner view is specific to this particular site layout. So much like this is before you, because they decided to remove the bank and add this drive-through facility, if in the future they came back with, to add another building, this would come back before this body, and we would do the analysis at that point. So if there was a modification to the layout of the drive-through lane, you know, we would assess that and we'd do the analysis and to ensure that, you know, those impacts were minimized.
Okay. And, you know, another kind of part of the reason why I'm asking that is if you're driving down El Segundo Boulevard and just the aesthetic of having this, like, queue of 18 cars there, is that something that we as, you know, commissioners that want the city to represent, is that something that we want people to see, especially, you know, in the afternoon, when there's a lot of, you know, rush hours, that street slows down a lot, you know, come like 5:00, 5:30. So I mean, while there's no building there, there's no reason to make it a straight line, and you don't need that kind of runway. Can we just cut it in half and have a different circulation within the parking lot? Is that an option?
I think I could speak a little bit to that. And then I think we'd like to defer this a little bit, because to the applicant, because so during staff review, we did ask for, and I felt bad a little bit afterwards, we asked for several iterations of design and orientation of the drive-through. One of the concerns was exactly that, but also just sort of circulation and flow of the site. And so there were probably conservatively half a dozen different options that were presented to staff to show sort of best layout and design, maintaining the parking, because keep in mind that some of that parking is tied to the other uses that are on the site as a whole, which are heavily parked uses. The Torrance Medical Facility is, medical offices in general are one of the highest producers of parking trip generation. And so it'd probably be rare that those spots are frequently unused, you know, it's going to be commonly a full lot regardless of what happens at the Starbucks site. But I would like the applicant to probably divulge a little bit more into the different iterations that they studied anecdotally to you, to give you some context on that. But we do have the nice, you know, the landscaping that should, once it matures along the corridor, you know, that should help screen the vehicle traffic or the queuing that will occur along, or, yeah, along El Segundo Boulevard.
Okay, that's good to know that it's a heavy, I guess, parking use, because I was worried about having kind of an underutilized parking lot there. And so my next comment or question really is, so the peak PM trips that you showed is, I think, is 149? Is that generated from the project that we're expecting or?
That's from, that's from all the uses.
Okay.
Combined.
So how many from the project is that?
I'd have to go back and look at the trip generation, but it's, it's.
I guess if it's increasing, I guess the numbers are almost irrelevant at this point to get to my point, which is, so all these trips are realistically, they're going to come from El Segundo Boulevard in that center driveway, right? Because no one's going to go on Continental and cross, they would prefer to not go on Continental and to make a left turn across four lanes there. So it's a pretty hard right turn there. Did we look at kind of like a cutout to ease the peak, the PM traffic time as people are leaving El Segundo? Because like I said, that street gets a little busy and gets, tends to be slow, and I think people turning in on that hard right turn, it would increase traffic or congestion a little bit more, and having a cutout there for people trying to get in at peak times would be helpful.
Not as part of this application. I think that was all examined when the actual site itself was initially approved. So I think that has been found that those driveway turning movements are adequate. There's a new light that has been added, right at the center of the entrance. I just made a left bound, a left turn, headed westbound from El Segundo onto Nash earlier today. Seemed to work fairly well.
Okay, okay. Again, this jumped out at me. If this was the project, then yeah, it would be a problem, and we'd probably need a cutout. But if this is the cumulative, then, and the addition for the project is pretty de minimis, then I think it should be fine.
Are there plans of adding spaces inside, though there is no space for seating inside the, this new restaurant?
Yeah, no, I think it's solely intended to be a drive-through facility only.
And then this, we would be approving a third drive-through on this project, on this, in this, in this area. And the other one is all the way east, far, far away. And then where would the, where was the second one?
So the second one is the Panera Bread, yeah, that's under construction now.
They're right next to each other, Cane's and Panera's.
That's right, I think the other end. So this isn't, okay.
I probably have questions for the applicant, but.
And I just have one question for staff, then. Can you give us maybe a little historical education on why this, we're approving a site plan versus an overall commercial envelope, and then the developer has the freedom within that to, this feels different than what we typically are approving.
Sure, I'll take a shot at that. So I think one of the things to remember, as Mr. Meiser indicated, this is part of the overall specific plan. And so the specific, specific plan calls out different development standards, and then it has some requirements that implementation of development within the specific plan area goes through a site plan review process to ensure consistency with the standards. And so when this initially came before the Planning Commission back in 2017, it was approved with, you know, with a certain layout. And so, and in that also included very specific requirements and limitations for that layout and that mix of uses. When the market, and I mean the grocery market that was proposed at the time, you know, went away, the applicant kind of was looking at, okay, what can we do with that? And so they came in with a revision. And so because the market was no longer part of it, and we had an approved site plan, as required by the specific plan, we had to bring that back to you, and we did the analysis, and that, you know, created a certain set of other requirements and conditions. And so, and at that time, with that, with that initial revision, two drive-through lanes were approved. And so it specifically limits that, it's two, 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 two drive-through lanes. So now that we fast-forward to today, the, you know, the applicant was proposing a third, and so we need to bring that back, because when you guys had a, when the Planning Commission approved it, there's a certain concept and layout. And so whenever, at least for this particular site, when these changes occur, we need to bring that back to you for ultimate approval. And for, like, you know, for, especially for the, that third drive-through lane, because it was specifically designed and approved for two.
Thank you, that's helpful. We'll open up to public communication. First right, as always, goes to the applicant.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bob Tarnovsky. I'm with Continental Development Corporation, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, CDC Mar Retail One, with our partners from Mar Ventures and our traffic consultant to answer any questions the commissioners may have regarding the project. I would like to say, though, that we've been working diligently with staff over a period of pretty close to a year now to iron out any wrinkles the staff may have found with respect to our project and our project design. And I'd also like to mention, and I know Commissioner McGee, you had asked some questions, that in addition to the Planning Commission within the City of El Segundo requiring approval of this project, we also had another very significant entity based upon our agreement that had to approve this project as well. So Torrance Memorial Medical Center and Cedar Sinai were involved in the many iterations of design, and the final product you see up on the screen there reflects. of design, and the final product you see up on the screen there reflects a, a meeting of the minds of all parties concerned. Uh, you know, in terms of the building itself, I might add that, you know, it's a small building, just over a thousand square feet, but what we insisted upon, because if it were left to Starbucks, they probably would not include it, we insisted upon a walk-up window. So if you didn't want to enter the drive-through, you had the ability to pull up, park your car, and go up to the walk-up window and place an order. So, uh, right now, the drive-through window is scheduled to be open from four-thirty in the morning till midnight, and the walk-up window from four-thirty AM to nine PM. Uh, might also want to add that you made a comment about the parking field. This plan actually, if you include the stack, which I agree is very large, but that was necessary to essentially create a situation where the parking field for Cedar Sinai and Torrance Memorial wasn't really impacted by the operation of the Starbucks. So, uh, as I think staff mentioned, it's a very busy place, and we wanted to make sure that we essentially had separated the two uses. So at, at no small expense, I might add, we created that physical drive-through separation. So if you're a patient of Torrance Memorial, you can easily pull in to a surface parking lot and go in and visit your physician. Uh, you made a comment, Commissioner McGay, about the site itself and landscaping, I wanted to point out that we indeed do have a grade separation, and the site itself sits elevated up from the street, and in addition to that, we are landscaping the entire perimeter, so when one drives down El Segundo Boulevard, y- you will not see a queue or a stack of five, ten, or fifteen automobiles. And then the final item I'd like to add is if we could request some minor clarifications to the conditions of approval in the staff report, specifically condition number thirteen regarding the outdoor gathering dining area and that it shall be maintained and available to the public, we'd like to request that we replace the word "public" with the patrons of the shopping center. Condition number fourteen, uh, it was expressed in the staff report that the city didn't want to see unsightly black metal doors, uh, to our trash enclosure, and we would propose that, uh, we would work with staff to paint the metal doors that enclose a trash enclosure, whatever color that the staff would like to see that's compatible with the aesthetic of the Starbucks building itself, and we would be happy to screen the, the back of the trash enclosure with landscaping and perhaps plant creeping fig to obscure, you know, any visibility of any kind of a block wall. And then the, the final item is just a clarification, condition number twenty states that pedestrian walkways within the project must include admixture colored concrete entered design that enhance and complement the project. We just proposed a clarification that this condition refers to new pedestrian walkways.
And can you, can you show us what those new ones are versus what are already out there now?
If you look at the site plan there, where you see twenty-one-twenty, uh, indicated just south of the Starbucks, there's quite a bit of, uh, flatwork, hardscape, and landscape that'll be required, and there'll be a, you know, a walkway out in front of that, so that'll all be new. As you move eastbound, uh, where you see the striping as you move from the rest of the retail center over to the Star, Starbucks, that's already been constructed, and some of that is, uh, just hashed out with blue striping for a pedestrian.
Gotcha. So, so it's a striped walkway on the asphalt in the actual driveway? So it's not a, it's not a grade separated sidewalk or anything like that?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, can, can you teach us a little bit about the, the seating area, the, the pedestrian experience? I mean, I know we're all focused on the cars and the driveway, um, you know, it is a coffee shop, it's a Starbucks, it's a...
Well, we actually expect a fair amount of flow of traffic, pedestrian traffic from the Torrance Memorial Cedar Sinai Medical Building
Sure.
over to the Starbucks, and we wanted to create within the common area of our shopping center a nice, comfortable environment. So, uh, unfortunately, in today's world, uh, you walk a very fine line because if you wind up with too much, call it comfortable seating, it invites other issues that we face today, and we wanted to make sure, though, there's a seated area surrounded by nice, comfortable, and lush landscaping for somebody to walk over and grab a cup of coffee or grab a sandwich and sit outside and enjoy it. Again, we expect a fair amount of utilization of that space from the employees of the hospital.
Do, do you have any idea how many people, how many patrons that area can accommodate outside? Pedestrians, not, not cars?
Jake, you have a number? Lionel?
I'd say that at least, uh, you know, a thousand.
Ten, twelve patrons.
But no tables or anything, just these little benches?
No tables.
No, no shade?
Currently, there's no tables, and, uh, you know, there's no permanent shade structures currently proposed by offhand, like, um, umbrellas or shade structures.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little disappointed that it's not more pedestrian-friendly, you know, you got offices right there, you got buildings across the street, I do think people would walk across to here, you know, it's, everybody loves Starbucks, and so it feels like so much emphasis is on the drive-through, and I get it, that's what it is, but, um, I feel like it's sort of missing an opportunity. You've got a metro station right there, right, right at the corner, people getting off, they don't, they're not in a car, um, you know, what, what sorts of pedestrian-level comforts can you have for people who are not in a car? You know, also, I guess that's the big thing here, is we're, we're approving a third drive-through. I remember in 2017, we had a lot of discussion about, wow, do we really want to promote people in cars, sitting there with their cars idling, you know, it's a carbon footprint, uh, issue, it's even more timely now in 2023 than it was in 2017, so, uh, you know, I, I, I just don't want to gloss over the impact that we're having here by having a lot of cars in a driveway, sitting there. And if there's anything that we can do to make it more comfortable for someone to walk up, get their coffee at, on foot, sit down, you know, have a conversation with a colleague?
W- we can probably create a built-in shade structure on the site, and we can also probably create built-in seating where you effectively have a table, if you want to lay your sandwich out and have a sandwich, do that as well. Again, unfortunately, we as owners of real estate, uh, along Rosecrans Avenue and along El Segundo Boulevard, um, fight a battle that's being fought all over the city
Of course.
in terms of
Of course.
utilization beyond business hours by others that we would hope wouldn't be there.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, and, you know, that is, uh, it's an unfortunate byproduct. Um, you know, it would be nice to have a, a more comfortable pedestrian experience there, so anything that you could do, I would certainly applaud.
We'd be happy to work with staff to enhance that area to staff satisfaction and your satisfaction.
Great, thank you.
Chair, if it may, I realize it's public comment, but just because it's topical, I, I did want to chime in and, and, you know, recognize, this is something that we also talked with, with the team about, um, and they enhanced the, the pedestrian movement, uh, in, in theory, to provide better connectivity to the Panera and the raising canes, because there is outdoor seating there. We had a conversation about the connectivity, uh, east-westbound between the site and, and the concept that folks may come park or visit the medical center, or even use a transit and visit, ideally, uh, there's a symbiotic relationship between the food retail that's happening there and this, this refreshment retail Starbucks, um, and that folks may transfer from one to the other, you know, using the pedestrian path from Starbucks to, to, so we, there was, there was a lot of talk and effort made at reorienting that, that process and adding the landscaping, um, to provide that walking experience between the site, and not leaning on just the walkway on, on, on El Segundo Boulevard, but creating a separate walkway down the middle. And so we did have this conversation, there was a lot of effort, uh, because of the orientation of the site, there's, there's limitations, and there's also other concerns, uh, that as a property owner that they have, as, as was just mentioned, but I did want to reassure the commission that, that staff is also interested in this and is happy to further pursue the conversation and talk about ways that we can enhance it in, in, um, either temporary measures, that, that, things that are put out during the day and come back in at night, and, and those types of things that aren't built into the environment, um, per se.
I, I might want to add as well, we have another area on the site, and that's the north-south path of travel between the Raytheon Campus and the gate to the Raytheon Campus, and the twenty-three, twenty-one fifty or thirty, I can't see that far, I'm sorry, the twenty-one-thirty Panera Bread Building, where you see that landscape very in the middle, that's designed where somebody could have a sandwich, or a taco, or a cup of coffee, and go sit down under a, a shade tree and enjoy it as well. And, and again, that was put in primarily for the benefit of the, uh, employees of the Raytheon Corporation.
Right, right.
Was one of the site plan iterations, I'm just wondering, orienting the Starbucks to be closer to the other retail?
We have probably five, six schematic plans that we can show you with it located, uh, at the main entry to the center, and I think at the end of the day, there was a concern from the hospital with respect to that location impacting visibility, and that location more impacting ingress and egress for their patients as they go park in the, the parking field. Most of, uh, on, on the site plan as well, you see the little circle that says seventy-seven, that area is primarily for employees of the hospital, and the patients will park in the field of parking to the north. And again, that's a very active, busy area, and they were concerned about people running into the queue to get their coffee and perhaps interfering with the flow of patient parking.
Sure, and have they expressed any concerns about that drive aisle, right, if you're queuing to get into the driveway?
No, because they've actually designated, uh, as you're moving down the drive aisle to enter the vehicular queue, the hospital has designated those stalls for some employee parking, and those will literally be folks that are probably parked stationary from eight to five.
Thank you. I do, I have a question that's not necessarily Starbucks-specific, but going back to Kevin's question, from the current parking that we have, do you have capacity to add additional buildings?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, the, the hospital has approval rights over any additional construction in the field, and one, I can sit here and tell you today that I feel comfortable saying they would never approve any additional development in that field, and, um, I'm not sure if we were to put five thousand square feet of additional pad space out there, we'd have the ability to adequately park it based upon today's parking standards.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else wanting, wishing to make a public communication? Uh, seeing none, we will close public communications, and any further discussion come from the dais.
I like your comments, Jay, about, um, pedestrian-friendly experience, I think that's, those are nicely warranted, thank you for mentioning that. Um, the conditions of approval that they asked for, the trash enclosures, the thirteen, fourteen, and twenty-six, certainly makes sense, the wording, the verbiage. Um, I think it's fine sort of where it's at, I don't know, they, they've obviously thought about it, and staff's done a good job with it as well, so I think it's, um, I think it's okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, with, with everything you said, Brenda, um, and for, for Jay's comments about being pedestrian-friendly, is there anything we could, any language we can put in there to ensure that, um, that staff works with the applicant to have more, I assume, pedestrian-friendly amenities?
Yeah, I mean, we could put that language in there specifically, uh, there's, what, what becomes difficult is, I mean, I, if we didn't have a cooperative relationship and we kept asking and asking for more, because there's no, nothing you could like check off of a box with a condition like that. Ideally, a condition is written so that you can check a box at the end of the day and say it's been satisfied, and so, I, you can word it however you like as the commission, um, but from an implementation standpoint, from a staff level, the more detail, or, you know, if there's a values-based or some quantifiable component that you're looking for, and again, increased pedestrian amenities is hard to quantify. Uh, I think we have a good idea of what you're looking for, but if you gave some examples like maybe, you know, shade cover, or, you know, something like that, it gives us an ability to, to have some parameters that, that we can check a box off essentially. So if you wanted to list a couple things like that, or if that's what it is, additional seating area or something like that, whether it be temporary or fixed to the ground, uh, then we can work with that and, and work with the applicant.
I, I think seating and shading should be fine, and I don't think it has to be fixed to the ground, it'd be if, if they...
Tables or no tables?
Oh.
Tables would be nice, you know, again, if you're just sitting there, having a conversation with a colleague, it's easier on a table than, you know, sort of sitting on a bench. Uh, and, you know, some verticality that, that feels pedestrian, you know, you mentioned the umbrellas, that's great, I mean, those, those are improvements that I think invite pedestrians, you know, if, if it, uh, if, if you drive up and all you see is the driveway, and it's like, ooh, can I, do I have to walk through the parking lot, and is it scary, and are people gonna drive over me? If, if it doesn't look welcoming to, at the pedestrian level, then I think that fails. So anything that, that, that you can do to, to foster that, um, that invitation to pedestrians?
If, if I could speak, I'd like to suggest that we'd be happy to add a condition that requires the applicant to add a shade structure and a built-in structure that facilitates tabletop-type seating.
That'd be great, thank you.
And, sorry, and if, and if the commission doesn't want to do that, we can, we can tailor it to read something like, um, you know, the applicant shall work with staff to, um, add additional, uh, pedestrian amenities, which could include, not limited to, additional seating, shading tables, uh, to be done to the satisfaction of staff prior to issuance of permits.
I'd probably throw a bike rack in there. Go right next to that somewhat class-one bike lane.
You don't get run over in the process.
That's right.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to do an inventory, um, I think Commissioner Newman referenced thirteen, fourteen, and twenty-six, I want to ensure that staff has those proposed changes. Um, and I think thirteen and fourteen needed some refinement anyhow, um, but I just want to make sure that those are, those are covered. I think thirteen was changing, uh, patrons to public to patrons.
Public to patrons, yeah, of the shopping center.
Fourteen, um, I just want to make sure we had clarity on fourteen and twenty-six as well.
Right, yeah, was it twenty or twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty, twenty, yeah, and I think twenty was just, um, was just adding the word "new", so new pedestrian walkways
Right.
within the project, and staff doesn't have an issue.
That's twenty, okay.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't have an issue with that.
And then for fourteen, for the door?
Yeah, and, and just to let, you let you know, and I, you may want to consider this, is, is, is from a staff's perspective, and I apologize, there's our, our notes in there, i- is ultimately what it says here, I mean, we don't want to just have a typical black metal door, um, and as the applicant has, has, has requested, you know, maybe perhaps color, um, but, you know, something to also note, if, if, and I'll give you this example, um, if, if you look at Topgolf, uh, there are trash enclosures there, and, but they're not really visible, or you don't really tell...
really visible or you don't really tell, you can't really tell, they're not apparent because they're, the actual material that was used for the gates is actually the same material that was put on the facade of the building. It's along the side, but the point is, you know, that's kind of, that's perspective that we were coming from. So you don't have, you know, this typical kind of, you know, corrugated metal, you know, that you typically see on it. Um, but at, at the request of the applicant, if, if, if the commission feels that, uh, putting in, uh, making sure that the color of those doors are adequate to, to, to minimize the visibility of that, the commission has that ability to do that. But I wanted to at least indicate why we were, why we were suggesting that in ways in which that could be achieved.
And there was also a mention by the applicant of being happy to landscape that enclosure. Is that something that's currently in the condition or that we would need to add to it?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is already kind of in their, in their landscaping palette. Um, I think what, what, when it comes to landscaping, uh, when we're looking at the doors, the enclosure doors, because those things, those tend, those obviously swing in and out, is, you know, a limited amount of, of, of landscaping you do, you could do to that.
Sure. And, uh, just to circle back, so we have those changes, thirteen, fourteen, twenty, and a, a new condition. Um, I, I would recommend, given the comment from, from the applicant, to make it more of affirmative, more of an affirmative obligation, uh, for the implementation of the shade structure and a built-in tabletop structure, um, as the newly, uh, added condition. So those four amendments can of course be any, could be part of any motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, one last thing, as long as the applicant's here. So I visited the site a couple of days ago and I tried to exit on Nash. I went through the, you know, in front of Raising Canes there, tried to make a left on Nash and there's a sign that says no left turn and there's a barrier. It's like, oh, wow, I'm stuck here. And I had to go and make a U-turn, it was a little funky. So you probably are aware of that.
Uh, we are aware of that and, uh, that's a condition, I believe, that may be in the conditions of approval and it's also, uh, a sentiment of Raytheon so that we're not interfering with the main ingress and egress into the campus.
So is, was I wrong to try to exit onto Nash from that parking lot? There was, there was no signage that told me not to do that?
Lionel can probably speak more articulately than I can.
Yeah, sure. Uh, part of it is a, a temporary condition because we're building the new Nash Street just, just on the other side, so it's blocked off. So, um, we've been working with different kind of ways to do signage and we're also open to suggestions. So it's a, it's a, it's a tough one that we're, that we're trying to sort out, but...
Gotcha.
Yeah, that, once Nash Street's open, you're, you'll be able to make a right.
I mean, was there a sign that told me no exit onto Nash and I just missed it?
There, there, there is some, you know, temporary signage there that says, you know, no, uh, exits, but, you know, maybe we need some more of that blink or maybe something bigger, you know, because, uh, it, it is a difficult situation.
Yeah, and then, and I was there when there wasn't a lot of traffic in that parking lot during lunchtime with, there's a lot of cars at Raising Canes, you know, they have to stop and wait to get across that thing. I just imagined that someone might panic if they got there and said, wait, I can't make a left turn, but now I'm trapped, how do I, do I back up, what do I do?
No, it's good feedback.
Jay, you should have been on your bike.
Yeah, that's true, that's...
We'll, we'll, we'll do some more analysis or try some more different, different signage in different, different ways. But yeah, it is, uh, right now while the road is under construction, it, it's a little bit, uh, uh, different on how it will function permanently.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any additional questions of us?
No.
Okay.
I think with that, we'll accept a motion. Yeah, you got it?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-nine thirty-eight approving environmental assessment number EA twelve hundred, Division B, site plan review and conditional use permit to approve the construction of a new drive-through restaurant along with the changes, uh, in the conditions of approval number thirteen, um, fourteen, twenty. Do I need to be specific when I repeat them?
You can just say, um, as, as noted by the city attorney.
As noted by our city attorney.
Sorry, but, but for condition number fourteen, um, I don't think we have clarification as to whether there's agreement on the doors, the metal doors, whether...
We were, it's recommended that it's an integrated design so that it doesn't look so obvious as a trash enclosure.
Yes, that is staff's perspective.
Okay.
Uh, but as the applicant has, has requested, he'd rather, they'd rather have it more of a painted color scheme that matches as opposed to material.
Material that Starbucks has already built.
Yeah, that's put on top of that.
Do we know what's standard for Starbucks?
Green?
Well, the integrated design, you're, the staff recommends that it's a, that it's the same texture as the existing building so that it really doesn't look like it's a trash enclosure.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, that's, that's our intent.
Is there, is there an issue if, if we added that for, uh, the applicant?
That it's not metal at all is what the current condition is.
I mean, it could be metal, but the, the finishes on, on the actual doors, that's our perspective.
Right now, um, the finishes of the building is brick, you know, veneer, which, which would be difficult to put on a metal floor.
A brick door is not something...
And then we have this, uh, you know, kind of wood style kind of paneling and the concern is that with something like a trash enclosure, um, you know, one, we'd have to fix it on there and it's not really made for that application, but with the abuse that the doors get and the, the trash and stuff that ultimately while, uh, you know, in this particular instance, which is a retail center, which is a little, you know, a bit different maybe than the Topgolf, I don't know their operations, but that over a short period of time, that it might end up actually looking worse than just the metal doors that could get painted and touched up quickly versus that kind of integrated, uh, veneer. So it's not something that's insurmountable, uh, obviously, but it's something that, um, you know, we just thought we'd mention because we think it's, uh, a more appropriate solution for this particular application.
And Lionel, can you orient us on where that, um, trash container is? Is that the thing that's in the corner there? And which way does the doors face, I guess? As lo, as long as we're diving into this, we may as well understand the context.
So there's the trash enclosure and then kind of, uh, the doors, uh...
The doors face east.
They face east, right.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
I have no issue with the language that the applicant's proposed.
Yeah, I'm okay with a painted door as well.
Oh, good.
Is it, but it's an enclosure and then the, the, could the enclosure be complimentary to the actual facades of the building and then the doors themselves that get used? Is that, is that, or is that what's happening?
No, that, that's what, that is what's happening. So it would be the doors that would be painted, uh, an appropriate color to match.
But the rest of the enclosure?
But the rest of the enclosure, right, yeah. Because that's not, as, as Lionel had indicated, you're not constantly opening and closing, that's the actual enclosure, um, that will have more of the, the permanent...
I, I don't have a problem if they're block...
And typically, they're, they're, they're cinder block and developments put, you know, stucco around it, but it, but with regards to the door themselves, that's what we were really concerned about from an aesthetic standpoint, but it sounds like that could be easily addressed through, through the, uh, painting, appropriate green?
Green.
Starbucks green?
Okay, so, so with reference to number fourteen, what, as the applicant, we're, we're going to, as the applicant words it, uh, and then number twenty is adding "new" to walkway. Uh, any new pedestrian walkway along with, uh, a new condition of approval with reference to shade seating and, uh, a table. I will move to adopt.
And we're adding a condition of approval?
For a table and seating and shading, yes.
They're second.
All seconds.
Do you want to repeat the...
Yes.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Inga?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner McGee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler?
Yes.
Chair Keldorf?
Yes.
Motion process five-oh. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes new, our, uh, business, new business items. Seeing none, report from the community development director or designated appointee.
The only, the only thing I, I do, I do want to provide an update on the, the welcome sign, uh, because as of this week, it is getting pushed, another meeting. Um, ultimately, it boils down to the cost. It's, it's, cost is increasing, it's more than folks are comfortable with and so our public works director is still trying to massage the scope so that it's something that'll be more palatable in terms of overall cost. And so I believe it will come before council, but it will not be August fifteenth as I originally had mentioned. So I will continue to keep the group apprised. So there's my update.
City Attorney's Office?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Did you have a question? No, Michael?
Okay, and planning commissioner comments? Mario, Brenda?
None for me. Wish everybody a happy summer.
Yeah, I'd like to say real quick that I, I attended the Catalyst, um, public meeting last night. Um, you know, it was kind of an open house where, uh, the Griffin Group presented their concept and, uh, I'm, I'm glad I went. It's great to hear, um, the sentiment of the, of, of our neighbors and, uh, it'll be interesting to see that project come together.
Commissioner Heschler, thank you for bringing that up and I just want to clarify that it was a community meeting sponsored, uh, by the property owner. Um, no application has been submitted to the city, so I just want to keep reiterating that and if and when does, an application is submitted, we will go through the process and there will be, uh, public notices for any city-held meetings. But what you attended yesterday and, and there were some staff, planning staff there, um, was something that was sponsored by the property owner, it had nothing to do with the city. So just wanted to go ahead.
It was very interesting and I too had attended.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that we were remiss in not congratulating Commissioner McGee in our last meeting for his extension of a term for another four years, so you're stuck with us, thank you, it's good to have you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And with that, we will conclude today's planning commission meeting.